All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Before we get started, let me read the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. Purpose of the meeting tonight is a workshop to discuss possible zoning, making some zoning changes. Inadvertently, the announcement for tonight's meeting was posted in the paper as a legal notice, which is the legal requirement for notice of such meetings. However, it was inadvertently left out of or left off of the web page. And some members of the public have brought that to our attention. With that in mind, I would recommend with the input from the commission that we go ahead with the meeting tonight. It is a valid meeting as long as it's been published in the newspaper. No official action takes place in a workshop. But we've got a number of people in the audience tonight, so we'll, with your approval, I'm going to go ahead and open up the workshop for a listening session and allow the members of the audience that have made the effort to show up tonight to go ahead. But we will limit our discussion. It will be on a subsequent, it will be on this month's long-range planning agenda to continue the workshop. And more than likely, we will schedule another workshop as needs be, or multiple workshops, to continue debating and discussing the proposals that have been put before us. Do I have, is that in agreement with, are the commissioners in agreement with that? With that said, then I will open the workshop. I would assume that most of you out there in the audience have seen what was published on the webpage concerning this proposal last month. With that, I'll open the floor for public input. I'm not going to put a hard and fast limit on your speaking, but I would ask that you not dominate the floor. So with that in mind, let's try to keep our comments to five to seven minutes. And if somebody really needs more, then we'll consider that. Yes?
Speak.
Okay. How many of you would like to speak tonight? One, two, three, four. All right. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record so we can get that recorded. And we're happy for your input, and let's proceed. So with that said, we will go.
Thank you, Ed. I'm John Templeton. I live at 1601 Brahman Lane in beautiful East Blunt County. I just have a couple of comments and maybe a question or two. First, I'd like to compliment you, John, in doing your usual thorough discussion of a pretty complex subject. And while it's thorough, I'm sure you don't consider it exhaustive, and that will come at another time eventually. Excuse me. One of the concerns that I have already expressed after my first reading of this proposal is that the alternatives discussed seem to have the potential to promote sprawl by leapfrogging from intersection to intersection across the county. I'd much rather see commercial growth in Blunt County follow an orderly course of gradual progressive development outward from the existing urban boundaries rather than hopscotching into far-flung areas. This is what the experts in the Hunter Growth Study favored, and it is implicit, I think, also in the conceptual land use plan and in other documents. Second, I'm concerned that the specter of campgrounds in the R1 district has been raised again so soon after it was generally panned by both the public and the county commission last year. I'm inclined to think that if that issue is to be debated once again, it should be presented as a proposal separate from this one regarding development on two-lane roads unless the two are inextricably linked in some way that I'm not catching on to. I understand that R1 was never intended to be protected from all forms of development. I just think that we may be stepping onto a slippery slope here with this proposal. And I would say probably there's a way to come out of this process with something that is generally acceptable. I just think we need to proceed with a good deal of caution. As for questions, I think I can boil them down to this. I think that it might help all of us, John, if we could get a response to you to this question. What exactly does this proposal make possible that is not already possible? That answer would allow us to think in a kind of a before and after mindset, and it might crystallize the issues a little bit more than they are already. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Who wants to be next?
I do. I'm Ingrid Hawn. I'm resident of Lewisville. I'm going to take John Lamb to task a little bit more than John did, but I'm pretty sure he can take it. I have to say, I started looking at this document that you got at the December meeting last month, and frankly, I congratulate any of you who got through it without getting a headache trying to decipher and interpret it. I think these materials could be more concise, more balanced, and a lot clearer than they are. And for what it's worth, I used to work in policy writing back in my youth, so I'm not completely, I don't think, off-base here. But if I were, if I were part of the planning commission and I were asked to look at revising zoning regulations, I would want to get like a Cliff's Notes version, first of all, of the proposed changes, and then maybe an appendix with the legalese and all the jargon so that I could refer to that as needed. But maybe John's a lot smarter than I am. I had a lot of trouble following some of this, and I had to go back and forth. And I think sometimes it ends up obscuring the proposal more than it elucidates it. So that being said, I would like to present three main points that I pulled out of this that I see as possibly things we need to look at again or to think about as you proceed. First of all, the issue on the first page is presented as "the problem" in bold. And try as I might, I couldn't see that there was a problem. The problem apparently purports to be that general commercial uses are now constrained to an extent not in keeping with the intent of adopted plans. And apparently by this, John means the policies plan and the conceptual land use plan. But looking back at those, even the sections that had been quoted in the later pages of the document, I don't see a contradiction. And we have to remember too that, I mean, we could talk more about the intent of the policies plan and the land use plan, but in the interest of time, we have to remember that the county's adopted zoning regs trump those plans regardless because they've been, they have the force of law, they've been written specifically for the county, and whatever, back in 2000, someone wrote about what might happen in the county, and a lot of that was descriptive, projecting things, but not prescriptive, not saying what should happen, but what might County zoning trumps the plans. So what y'all decide, what the county commission decides to adopt is what's going to hold sway. So I don't think we need to worry that there's any kind of necessarily dire contradiction here. I don't, so therefore, I object to being, the whole thing being framed as a problem. I don't see necessarily a problem. Okay. Second point, referring to the alternatives that are presented. We're only presented with two alternatives, and both of them require changes to zoning. And I think we have a lot more than two alternatives. I think the county has a lot more things they could look at doing, including nothing if they decide that there is in fact no problem with how things are right now. One option, one alternative would be to simply refer callers who are asking about commercial development in the R1 to look at doing it in the RAC zone where it is already permitted, including campgrounds are already permitted there. You know, go for it. The infrastructure is there, and that is consistent with the policies plan and the conceptual land use, land use plan goals. Build commercial where we've got existing infrastructure. The county went to great lengths to construct the zoning around this RAC, and let's use it, okay? So I don't think there's just two alternatives, and I don't think the only alternatives we have are to change our zoning. You might also, I'm sure you're quite aware, that the county commission has been extremely reluctant in recent years to touch zoning. We've had issues come up, I can think of three already, where it just goes around and around, and they never change it. So do we really want to go back to that in the absence of some pressing need? Okay. My last point is, we have this document, and I would say that there is no actual discussion of the implications of these proposed alternatives. What's going to happen if we do this? What will happen if we do that? And I think that's absolutely necessary. If you're going to talk about changing zoning, you need to have a list of the pros and cons and what's likely to come out of that. I mean, right off the bat, we can think of what's going to happen, some of the negatives for me, which would be a lot longer than the positives. Leapfrog development, and if we did campgrounds, high-density residential in rural areas that are not supposed to be used for high-density residential. Both of those things, I think, especially trouble me, and they would be a very high price to pay in order that I have more places in the county where I can stop and buy cheap junk imported from China, or get me a hot dog, or fill my gas tank. And I think I've got plenty of those places already, and most of the time, I'm in town every day, and I get it there, you know? Although not the hot dog, because I got to watch my figure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Skinner. I live on Mark Mill Pike in Rockford. Thank you, gentlemen and lady, for the opportunity to give our two cents. I'd like to say that many of you know I've been involved and concerned about land use issues for a lot of years. And it seems to me that your challenge as planning commissioners is to always be asking yourself, what is the vision for growth in Blunt County? How can we maintain what makes this a beautiful, attractive place to visit and to live? And most importantly, how do the people want Blunt County to grow? Not how do we accommodate requests from individuals who seek personal gain from their property? How do the people want the county to grow? John Lamb, years ago, went around the county, did 21 workshops all over the place, and asked people, that's how the policies plan was created, which talked about a high concern for folks is preserving the rural natural and historic qualities of the county. Many communities, unfortunately, engage in zoning on demand. If current zoning doesn't accommodate the development, no problem. Property will be rezoned with little hesitation. Let's not be one of those kinds of places. The problem with the proposed zoning change is that it promotes a pattern of development that is unattractive, unsustainable, and harmful. It would increase traffic on congested, narrow, heavily-traveled country roads, creating safety hazards for school buses, cars, trucks. It would introduce high-density parking lot lighting spilling into neighboring homes all night, every night. And I say this as someone who lives a quarter-mile away from a church, which has a lot of high-density lighting in their parking lot. Noise, lights, and traffic would disturb residents and degrade their property values. Commercial activities and various large metal buildings, like we have on 411 South, dotted along our scenic highways would detract from the beauty of this county. I know all of you have been up and down Sevierville Road, and you know what a beautiful asset that is to this county. Do we want Blunt County to gradually sprawl and lose its rural beauty as we've seen happen in neighboring Sevier and Knox Counties? The proposed zoning changes present a danger to our losing what has made Blunt County a beautiful, appealing place to live. A better strategy is to reuse and redevelop existing areas, places where infrastructure already exists, and to concentrate our commercial activities there. Because, as you're well aware, the challenge for Blunt County is not if we grow, but how we accommodate growth. So again, thank you for the opportunity to have my say, and I hope you'll seriously consider what you hear this evening.
I'm Billy Minzler. I live off Allegheny Loop in the Six Mile area. I've served with a number of organizations in the county and the state in conservation and taking care of the beauty of our land. We all have enjoyed this county, one of the prettiest places in the state, probably in the whole country to live. And the question, as Ms. Skinner pointed out, is how do we grow and preserve the quality of life that we enjoy here? Projections I've seen indicate what we're about 120,000 now in Blunt County, and we may double that in the next 50 years, so it's nearly a quarter of a million people. So growth is going to happen, but how do we do that in a way that maintains the quality of life here? About 15, maybe 20 years ago, I served at the request of the county executive on the urban growth planning team. That included mayors of Merrillville, Alcoa, Friendsville, and Rockford. And that was at the mandate of the state that we come up with such a plan. And so that ensuing growth plan was to do what I, what I think we're about, is to grow our county in a way that made sense and preserve the quality of life. In the meantime, the county's successfully struggled through zoning laws that helped do the same thing. So you have pretty good guidance on how to get to where we want to go. And I just urge you to follow that, those laws and plans to get there and not have to try and reinvent the wheel or circumvent the law by measures that allow somebody to do, to do management or construction in a way that was opposed to the zoning or urban growth plan that we've already come up with. So the way to do that is, and we appreciate that, do exactly what we're doing now. Get together and talk about it, and if changes are proposed, then we together decide on how the best to do that. But use the growth plan that you already have and the zoning laws that are in place without having a variance for anybody that comes along. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Members of the commission, do you have any questions that you'd like to pose to those that have spoken or to the audience in general?
I just have some comments as we were just talking, and some things that just came to my mind. That's what we're here for, I assume, right?
Sure.
Just looking at my notes. John, when was, how long has it been since the Hunter Growth Study? Was that 10 years ago, when that started?
I can't really recall. I don't know that it's been 10 years.
Give or take, close to it.
Probably close to it.
And looking back at that, was there a timeline on that Hunter Growth Study? Or was that like a snapshot? Or was there any timelines or checkpoints in that? I'm trying to remember. Does that make sense of what I'm asking? Was there any?
If you're talking about their time horizon, I think they projected out about 50 years or so. It was quite a bit of a projection for population, but their main focus was on what was occurring then in the immediate timeframe. And keep in mind that that was not a plan per se. It was a study, and it was not adopted by the county.
Okay. In addition to that, I think about, I think, John, I think you made, you made this comment. I like this, it says, what is possible, it is not already possible. John, I think you mentioned that. I like that saying. My thing that goes along is being proactive, I think, is the responsibility that we all have, not reactive. And in my opinion, I think it's, that's a challenge. It's easy to say that, but it's hard, hard to do. Being proactive, you're going to make some things right, and you're going to make some things wrong. But I'd much rather be proactive than reactive. I think that you're going to get more, you're going to deal with more wrong things. So that's how I look at it, that I will make sure that we take a proactive approach. And from a commercial standpoint, you know, I look at it, you know, I'm a commercial person. You know, commercials, businesses are taxed at 40% assessment. They're an assessment of, I think you can look at that in several different ways. In one way, they're already paying a penalty for, for being a commercial business. So, you know, I look at that from a wide range. You know, why should they pay a higher, have a higher assessment than a residential? Maybe there's an answer I'm not aware of, but I wonder about that sometimes. You know, to me, that's, that's, could be viewed as a penalty. And then lastly, you know, I think about, you know, whether it's the Hunter Growth Study or the common knowledge that we all know that our population is going to continue to grow in the next 10, 20, 30 years. You know, where are these people going to, we know where they'll live, we know that. We know we've got room for them. But, you know, where are they going to continue to do their shopping, get their groceries, get their daily necessities that we all do now? You know, if we have another 50% of a population increase, our current infrastructure and our current commercial, I don't think can support that. So I think that forces us to have to be proactive, as I go back to, in considering what makes sense. Now, that's, that's the loaded question, is what makes sense? But I think it would be unfair or unrealistic for myself or us to sit here and think that the population will not continue to grow and to not think that these people will demand that this infrastructure, our schools, and this commercial plays into that. I don't think it's fair to think that the, the community won't demand those changes to happen. Now, what extreme? I'm not, I'm not sure of that yet, but I think some of our most vocal people that, you know, I'm fortunate, this is my hometown, but I'm, most of our most vocal people are people that have moved here, that this is not, you know, their home. I assume I hear that on a daily basis, how wonderful our place is, but they don't want to change anything. They want to keep it the way it is. And I don't think that's a fair way to, you know, to look at, you know, what we're facing either.
John, since you asked about the question that I asked, you may have misinterpreted what I said, Speaker, because I think everyone acknowledges that we're going to have growth, and at least one of them made a point. That question is where and how we're going to have growth. There may be somebody in the audience that's totally anti-growth. I don't know who they are.
John, I just like the way you worded it. That was a good, a good way. You know, I look at the urban growth boundary, that was, you know, those lines in the sand were drawn for a reason. And, you know, like you said, I always like to back up time and say, all right, how far are we along with what the urban growth boundary truly was? That was the city to annex and grow that, and grow their boundaries. But, you know, I don't see that happening at the rate that it was intended to happen.
Thank you, John. Commissioner McCall?
John, in this problem, you said county offices have received several inquiries about prospect for commercial use. Can, is there any example of that, and where could you, that you could tell us?
A lot of, a lot of the calls that we get are of general nature that don't have a specific proposal. They're asking about a specific piece of property, and can it be used for commercial use? It might be a person's home property that they want to convert to a business. And we tell them if they do have options, it's home occupation and a family home enterprise. But if they're, they're talking about just maybe converting their home to an actual business and, you know, maybe moving out and having that as a standing business, or buying a house, or buying a lot and developing this business, we have to advise them based on the regulations. Now, those are general calls, and it's hard to say that there's a specific plan in that. If there is, I can give some examples. A retail chain has been looking for land in Blunt County. They've already established in a few places in Blunt County, and they're looking for other land. And we advise them on any prospects that they have, whether it's allowed or not. So we do have those kind of larger requests. But most of the requests are from people in, in the county that want to put up a, you know, a repair shop, a beauty shop, or something like that, something smaller.
So on a larger retail, if that kind of person, would they, would you do that on a one-on-one basis to rezon that area for that particular development?
Well, if they're looking in an area that's not conducive to rezoning or doesn't have any provisions for establishment of that use, we just have to tell them that, no, that it's not allowed.
But they could come and ask?
They could come and ask if they wanted to. But that is, that is like what we're talking about here, a piecemeal approach.
Yeah. To me, it might just depend on the size of it, but, okay.
Well, keep in mind, in the R1 zone, except, in the R1 zone, except along four or five-lane cross-sections, you don't have a zone that you can rezon to. I mean, it's, it's just not there. So it's not a matter of coming in and asking for a rezoning of a property along Highway 411 North. There's no zone outside the urban growth boundary that would fit that situation.
So you couldn't come in and ask for an RAC in that kind of?
You'd have to actually change the wording of the regulations to extend the RAC zone to a two-lane cross-section. And one of the points I was making in the memo is that, you know, if it is desirable to put commercial uses along the two-lane sections, you might have to have an RAC zone light if you're going to go that route, because the RAC zone, as it's written now, is really intended for a four- or five-lane cross-section. So I'm talking about a change in the structure of the zoning, not a, not an addressing of a particular instance of somebody coming in and wanting to rezon for something, let's
Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess what I'm...
I guess what I'm trying to play in my mind is, I, I don't like the idea of, and I know this is bad terminology, but spot zoning, but to me, that means you do one here and you skip three miles, and you do one here and you skip two miles, and you do another one there. I'm not sure I like that idea. And that being said, I travel Severville Road every day, just almost every day, coming to Mariville, 'cause I live in Seymour, and that's my major route, usually is 411. And when I look at that, and I drive down, just past, I believe, Peppermint Road on the left, you can look over there, and I mean, the mountains are just absolutely gorgeous. I'm not sure I wanna destroy that, again, with, with looking at some kinda development sitting right there in the middle of that. But again, I realize we're gonna have to have growth because the county is growing, and probably a little more rapidly than a lot of, some of us might want, but, but I look at some of the crossroads, and I'm speaking from my district also, I'm also the commissioner from that district, and I'm speaking, coming along Severville, old Severville Road, and the crossroad, the minor arterials that are listed are River Ford Road, Wildwood Road, Prospect Road, and Hinkle Road. And I'm thinking, well, there's already, I think, three churches right there at the Hinkle Road, Hinkle Road cross-section there. If you put anything else there, it's gonna congest even worse than what it is now. Wildwood Road, you've got Porter School in and out of there, so you're gonna, you know, you've got some congestion there. Prospect Road, you've got the new Prospect Elementary School there. I mean, we're, we're looking at picking, picking roads that are already having traffic problems and wanting to put something, another commercial development at, at these intersections, which is gonna just enhance those traffic problems. So I, I'm, I'm trying to get right in my mind what's gonna be the best thing for the county and the best thing for, I guess, the people of the county. Because, like I said, I travel that road every day just about. And I, my daughter travels it, she teaches at Mariville High School, she travels it every day, and she brings it on my little three-and-a-half-year-old grandson every day along that road. And the more traffic you put on that road, I think the more danger you're presenting to, to my grandson and my, my daughter, basically. So, I'm gonna have to take a look at this. And one other comment that I, that I saw, that I'm trying to get right in my mind, is under the paragraph, "The Problem," and it states, "However, a controversy on Highway 411 South highlighted some issues with allowing a wide range of commercial uses in rural areas." I was not on the planning commission at that time. Consequently, provisions allowing general commercial uses as special exception with limitations were deleted from that zone. There's a reason they, the, the commission deleted that at, at that time. I, I don't know what it was, 'cause I didn't serve on the commission, but apparently there's a reason they did that. I mean, they, they just didn't come out of the clear blue sky and say, nope, we're not doing it. Apparently, there were some reasons involved to delete that from the R1 section. So I think we need to take a look at those and see what those reasons were. Thank you.
Go ahead and step forward.
I'm Brad Answell, I live on Happy Valley Road. One thing that I just haven't heard anybody mention, and that is, you know, it's, it's, once something is done and becomes codified in place, it's really hard to make it go back again. And I would say, that's something that I hope all of you can hold close to your hearts and realize, sometimes there's no way back out of this, if you've created a situation that allows too much growth too fast, and maybe some unintended consequences. So I, to me, that would just be a, you know, a governing thought that I would hope that you would all keep in mind, is that, is to proceed in a deliberate way about any decisions that affect the whole county, so that we don't end up with unintended consequences.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the commission to the members of the audience? Is there any more comments out there that, oh, I'm sorry?
I don't know if and when Pelliciple will ever get built, but if it does, I think we all will realize that wherever it intersects with Severville Road and 321 North, just automatically gonna develop. And in that particular case, if John can answer me, that will wind up being probably rezoned and go, fall into Mariville's planning commission, wouldn't it?
It's already in their urban growth boundary, and it's subject to annexation provisions under the 1101 growth law and the plan, and I think they do have plans for extending sewer out to that prospective intersection and annexing it very quickly when the intersection is completed.
At both, at both places?
Severville, I-
Severville Road and 321.
Oh, well, yeah.
Their urban growth is, I mean, is, is 321 also?
Yes.
Okay. So we, say so then, anyway, right?
We wouldn't have any say if they annexed it, no.
Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may have answered my question already with, with what Commissioner McClellan said. How far down Severville Road does the urban growth area go now? I'm just-
It goes to within five hundred feet of the Little River.
What about on 321? How far? Hubbard Road? Hubbard School?
It takes in the, the high school, I think. I'm gonna have to check the map on that. It goes down just about to Hubbard, in that general area.
Anyone else out there? I want to add, add your comments after the, everyone else has spoken.
I'd just like to say, I'd prefer including us in discussion, appreciate it.
You are welcome, and I'm sure you will have further opportunities as we, I, I guess I would say, that there is no foregone conclusion. These discussions came up, in part, because of questions I had about small neighborhood And at the same time, I have many of the same concerns that have already been expressed tonight, and so it's, it's difficult to know how you, we wanna put limits, and at points, it appears to me that we have gone to the extreme of putting limits, and we don't have any flexibility. At the other, on the other hand, as you mentioned, Mr. Menzer, once you open the door, it's hard to go back, and so that's the tipping point, the balance that we have to, the balance beam that we try, try to balance on, so. Commissioner Kirby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had some real good comments from, from people all over the county, from Happy Valley to Lewisville to Rockford, and Mr. French from up Seymour Way. If we're gonna have another work session, I'd like to have some people here, or invite some people, or put in a paper, that we are talking about the road that they live on, now these people lives on this road, and they communicate up through it every day, some goes across country, some does use the highway. So, I'd still like to have more input on people that actually lives from, from the growth boundary where Mariville, we know they're gonna go there, there's no way around it, and we need, we know we need to stay away from that river all we can with anything that's beyond the river. So, and we already got churches up there, we've got cemeteries up there, we've got mobile homes up there, we've got beauty shops up there, we've got car repair shops up there, we've got, already got a lot of the things that we're talking about there, that's been there forever, and they're owned by families, local families, and they're not people that just come in and said, "I'm gonna buy this five acres and I wanna put a," you know. So, I'm sorta like Mr. French. When you drive that road, especially in the daytime, it's a nightmare in the nighttime, especially on a rainy night. We have race cars going up and down that road, pulling trailers, pulling race cars. We have buses, tour buses. We got pretty well everything in the world going up and down that highway. But what's gonna happen is Pelliciple is gonna pull a lot of that stuff off and take it on over to 321. So, it is a lot of things that pertain in that particular road that's really gonna have to be looked at, like Tommy said down there. I'd just like to have some more input on the people that's been there, they've been there for thirty, forty, fifty years, some of the families been there for a hundred years. So, if we're gonna have another work session, and we need, we need to invite the public, again, and just keep, and see what we come up with. And, and you know, when we go from R1, we can't call it an R1 zone, we're gonna have to put something on it, like commercial, you know? We don't wanna put heavy or medium, 'cause that just creates more problems when you got, you got a place that works one or two people, and then you got a place that put in seven, eight more people, that's more traffic than congestion. So, and another thing, we need to take, John, I wish you could find somewhere, not only in Blount County, but somewhere, that they've got zoning on this type of road. I don't know whether that's possible or not.
It is.
Okay, I'd request that, see, see what they wrote up and see if it's, how it's working. If you do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? I guess from my perspective, and I, I'll throw this out to the audience. What comes to my mind, and perhaps what was some of the genesis of even broaching this subject with, with John some months back, is I think of small neighborhood convenience stores, service stations. And I'll give you some examples, and then, I guess I would ask, as an audience, that you just consider what the communities would be like without these entities. For example, Ella Joy Market on Ella Joy Road, the convenience store at the intersection of Montvale and Ridge, the small convenience facility at Chihawee View, and, what's, Wilkerson Pike, Anne's at the corner of Rocky Branch and White's Mill. I mean, Becky's, I'm sorry. We have accommodated those because they were grandfathered, they were old-time facilities. Current zoning does not permit such a convenience. And it was, when I looked at those types of facilities, is, is really the question that was prompted my mind to even broach the subject. It is those types of things that, as a community, we allow today only because they are grandfathered old uses. Now, I fully understand the fears of opening the commercial door, because we all have visions of strip malls and other such ugly facilities. And I, I don't really expect any, there's no easy answer to it, but I'm just trying to give you a picture of what was going through my mind.
Could I, yeah, could I at least respond?
If you could come up to the microphone so we can get the response.
Can we not agree that there are plenty enough right now of those kinds of neighborhood markets, and any new ones that might added would only take away from the business at those kinds of places? And I gotta say that I live near Porter Elementary School, and Clay Bow's store, as you may be well aware, changed, has changed hands a couple of times in the last ten years, and it's closed now. It's been closed for a long time, and it was a thriving place, but none of this folks, the two business folks that separately took it over after the Clay Bow's sold it, have been able to make a go of it. It just, I mean, people gonna drive into town for their milk and their gas, unless their gas for their mower or something, but it's really not, in this day and age, when everyone's more automobile-centered, it's not realistic to think that people are really gonna shop in any substantial way at their local market. They're gonna go to Walmart and, and buy their tires and their batteries and their milk and their gas, too, so. I appreciate local markets that can still make a go of it, it's probably mostly 'cause they're selling cigarettes and gas, but, and I appreciate that they're still here, but I don't think it's an opportunity that we need to promote.
Thank you, Kathy.
And I'd also address that-
Sure, John.
I know to some extent I'm echoing what Kathy has just said, but Ella Joy Market has opened and closed twice in the ten years I've been living out there. It's not overwhelmed with business. It has its good days and its bad days, good times and bad times. I think there will come a time when we do in fact have a population in the county of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and I think we'll reach that much quicker than fifty years. But right now, I don't think people are greatly inconvenienced by having to drive half a mile or a mile to get to a convenience store. To enhance that so-called convenience by making it possible for them to only drive quarter of a mile, that's, that's what they call marginal utility, and it really, you know, you pay the full price for marginal- And it really, you know, you pay the full price for marginal utility, and I don't think we wanna pay that price. There are a lot of types of businesses and institutions that are already enabled in, in R1. And again, I'll say that the day may come when we need to consider having more of them. The ones you mentioned, though, were grandfathered in, and we've gotten along quite well with them as they are. That's what I would say.
I wanna beat a dead horse, I'm Brad Ansley, but I think of, in Tulasse, they got, they built this beautiful, Charlie Lunford sold them that property, and they built that beautiful little country store there with a gas station, it was something, it was a tremendous benefit to people that lived in Happy Valley and lived in Tulasse. And then we had the landslide, and we had the economy tank, and that business failed. And of course, Charlie closed down the country store company, which I would just, which broke my heart, which was, to me, is one of the real historic and iconic places in Blount County, and I wish it was still going. That was Charlie's decision to make, that was his property. But, and then I think of Dude Cooper's, that was a pretty viable little country store that was happening when I moved here in nineteen ninety-nine, it was going strong up until about five years ago, and it seems to have dried up. It's sold, it's been sold, and now in, in that country store in Tulasse, there's a Harley place, and I don't know that they make any money in that place, they just got enough money behind that huge company to keep it going, because they're not even open but half a year. So I wonder, right now, if there really is a demand for more of these kinds of little things, that people would rather ride to Walmart and then have the full, once they're gonna leave the house and get in the car, then they have the full use of whatever is all at the Walmart that they need, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, just comments? If there are none, I will draw the workshop to a close. I thank everyone, I thank you for showing up tonight, and we will continue our debates. Thank you.